So, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Dawson County Board of Commissioners voting session. Today is Thursday, September 18th, 2025. Appreciate everybody that's with us in attendance as well as those that are with us online. First up, we need to come out of executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
Make a motion.
Second. By Commissioner Bruce.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Stowers. Discussion. Hearing none, please vote by show of right hand. And 3-0, and we're out of executive session. We move on to roll call. Let the record show that all the commissioners are present except Commissioner Gaines. Ask everyone to please stand for brief invocation and pledge. If you would, bow your heads, please. Our dear gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for the many blessings of life, and we ask that you give us knowledge and wisdom to carry out the business of this county. Anything that we accomplish will give you the honor and glory in Christ's name. We do ask and pray. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Are there any announcements on the board? Any announcements on the board? We move on to the approval of the minutes. First up, we have the minutes of special call meeting held on September 4th, 2025. Any additions or deletions? Motions?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Stowers, seconded by Commissioner Bruce. Discussion. Hearing none, please vote. All right. Okay. So, that is approved 3-0. Next up, we have minutes of the work session held on September 4th, 2025. Any additions or deletions? Motions?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stowers, seconded by Commissioner Bruce. Discussion. Hearing none, please vote. And that is approved 3-0. Next up, we have the minutes of the voting session held on September 4th, 2025. Any additions or deletions? Motions?
Motion to accept as is.
Motion by Commissioner Bruce.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Turkett. Discussion. Hearing none, please vote. And that is approved 3-0. Next up, we have the minutes of special call meeting held on September 11th, 2025. Any additions or deletions? Motion?
Motion to approve as is.
Motion by Commissioner Bruce, seconded by Commissioner Turkett. Discussion. Hearing none, please vote.
I've done it twice. It just says refresh. Did it come through that time? Okay.
There you go. And that is approved 3-0. Next up, we have approval of the agenda. Do have some changes to the agenda. Under new business, be number four, five, and six, FY 2026 legacy link contract; number five, Georgia Department of Human Services, VERTA Incorporated, temporary contract; and number six, FY 2027 Georgia Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration, Section 5311, application contract. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with those three changes.
Mr. Chairman, could I offer a request to add one more thing to the agenda? There was the joint defense agreement that I circulated earlier this week in the Womack versus Dawson County and Hall County case.
Yes.
If it would meet with your approval to put that on to ratify my signature on that joint defense agreement, I would appreciate that.
Joint defense agreement. So, entertain a motion with those four changes.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the four changes.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stowers, seconded by Commissioner Turkett. Discussion. Hearing none, please vote. And the agenda is approved with those four changes, 3-0. No one signed up for public comment in this section?
Yes, sir.
We move on to consent agenda. In the consent agenda, we have four items: mutual aid agreement between Dawson and Lumpkin County for fire and emergency services; a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works to execute options agreements for the purchase of right-of-way; memorandum of agreement between Dawson County and the Upper Chattahoochee River Soil and Water Conservation District concerning plan reviews; and the Dawson County employee handbook. You heard all of those at the last meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bruce, seconded by Commissioner Stowers. Discussion. Hearing none, please vote.
Person that did that again, will you? Did mine come through? Okay.
And that consent agenda is approved 3-0. Next up, we have public hearing, proposed text amendments to the Dawson County Code of Ordinances Growth Management, second of two hearings. First hearing was held before the Planning Commission on August 19th, 2025. Richard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. Last time on September 4th during the work session, we went over the summary of the changes. What's happened recently is there have been concerns about too many subdividing multiple times.
In a quick timeframe, therefore, what's specified today as far as changes based on specific input comments is Section 133-115 is the minor subdivision plat specifications. And as proposed in a possible motion, if the board so chooses, specific to 133-115, the rural subdivision option proposal, that rural subdivision proposal could be deleted, in other words, not added to the proposed changes. And then, the existing language about five years being the time where when somebody subdivides for a few lots, and if they want to fairly quickly, say a year or two later, further subdivide the same property, that the current language notes that there's a five-year waiting period, that language would remain. In other words, although it's proposed to be deleted, it would stay in the county code. So, the potential motion, if the board is, the changes are acceptable, but for specific to 133-115, might be to delete the rural subdivision proposal and keep the five-year standard in 133-115.
Questions for Richard? Thank you, sir. All right, so this time, I'll open up the hearing. Anyone here to speak on the proposed text amendments to the Dawson County Code of Ordinances Growth Management? Anyone? Seeing none, I'll close that hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Before any motion is made, I just want to thank Richard and his staff and Joey for meeting with us as well. For those citizens who have not read this yet, we heard your concerns with the survey that was sent out with the 1,300 respondents, I think it was. So, certainly, thank you, citizens, for responding to that survey and letting us know the future direction of the county. And thank you, Richard, and your staff for doing your due diligence, doing a lot of work on this to kind of get this to where we see the future of the county. And so, I just want to say thank you for that. We had a long meeting the other day, and I was super excited with how well it went. And thank you for hearing us out for that.
I'll also say thank you really to just everyone involved. Richard, you've been a huge help in this. It's been a lot of back and forth, I know, so thanks for being patient with us. It does take a lot, not just with the survey that went out. That was our way of trying to reach every citizen, and we do appreciate everyone that was involved in that and answered those questions. I know it took a few minutes to do, but we really appreciate that. But it's, you know, citizen meetings and being involved in all the different committees that Dawson County has going on and, you know, talking to people individually and all the emails that we get and the phone calls that we get, we really do try to listen. And we are moving forward with these different Code of Ordinances to kind of help growth management in Dawson County. So, I'll just also say thank you to everybody involved. It's been a, I don't know, meticulous project.
Richard, I'll echo what they've said. You've done an outstanding job. And for the general public that's here, understand this is a living document. It'll be changed over and over and over again. This is not going to be the final document. It's a living document. We worked on this thing two years ago. We're back here two years later, probably a year or so later. We may be back again. So, it's a living document. We're trying to get the best document that we can for people to follow. And as the county grows, we all know the county's going to grow, so we're trying to be prepared for that. And so, thank you for all your hard work. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
So, Angie and I had a conversation. I need two motions, correct? Do I need to make them individually and get seconds on them individually? So, my first motion is that we approve the proposed text amendment to the Dawson County Code of Ordinances with the exception of Section 113-115, the minor subdivision plat, and revert back to the previous verbiage that was mentioned by Richard momentarily.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stowers, seconded by Commissioner Turkett. Discussion. And that is approved 3-0.
On that same notion, we have heard our citizens. We have addressed a lot in these ordinances, particularly the land use ordinance, but I do feel as if we need to visit the comp plan again. And so, with that, I would make a motion that we enter an emergency moratorium for 30 days. Am I saying that?
October 17th. I think what I would recommend is let's extend the existing moratorium to October 17th. That would get us to our second meeting in October for purposes of working to start aligning the comp plan to the new ordinance documents.
So, I will amend my motion to extend the current moratorium to October.
Make a motion.
I need to make, I'll make a motion to extend our current moratorium to October 17th with the intention to work to realign our comp plan with the changes that we are focused on here with this land use ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stowers, seconded by Commissioner Bruce. Discussion. And that is approved 3-0. Ms. Davis, I require a public hearing.
Not for this extension, but on October 16th, at our next meeting, we will decide. I thought I made myself a note to speak with staff about how long we're going to need to look at that comp plan, if we need additional time, which I suspect we might.
Okay.
Then, we'll likely conduct a public hearing at October 16th meeting.
Okay.
For an additional extension. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes. Yeah, nobody spoke. Yeah, we did. We're good. All right, we'll move on to, we will move on to new business. Get my papers right here. First up, we have consideration of resolution authorizing the Public Works Department to proceed with necessary property and/or property rights interests with the Elliott Road project that's T-Splash with a $40,000 maximum. Motions?
Make a motion that we approve the resolution to authorize Public Works to proceed with necessary property and/or property rights interests required for Elliott Road project in the amount of $40,000.
Through T-Splash.
Through T-Splash.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Stowers, seconded by Commissioner Bruce. Discussion.
That's with a max of $40,000.
Maximum.
Max.
Next up, we have consideration of RFP 480-25, on-call right-of-way land acquisition services. You heard that a couple of weeks ago. The recommendation was Colliers Engineering and Design and THC Incorporated, following the hourly rate that was provided, and that would come from Splash 7 or T-Splash, depending on which one of those revenues the road was designated in. Any other information needed? Motions?
Make a motion that we accept the proposals received and award a contract to Colliers Engineering and Design and THC Incorporated to utilizing the hourly rate submitted with their respective response and to utilize Splash 7 and T-Splash depending on the road project.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stowers, seconded by Commissioner Turkett. Discussion. Hearing none, please vote. You want to vote? You just got here.
Sorry. Sneezing situation.
That's approved 3-0. I did vote because you weren't in here, but we'll call it 3-0 with you. You're back. All right. Next up, we have consideration of RFP 481-25, design bill services, fire station 3, and fueling station. Recommendation with Scroggs and Grizzle, Splash 7 project, $2,784,000 with a 10% contingency. County manager and I had some discussion about that. Yeah, $3.6 million budgeted for this, and we will stay within the budget. Motions?
Make a motion that we accept the proposals received and award a contract to Scroggs and Grizzle in the amount of $2,784,000 with a 10% county-controlled contingency utilizing Splash 7.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stowers, seconded by Commissioner Bruce. Discussion. Vote. And, and that is approved 3-0.
They didn't say to vote, so I was waiting on chairman.
Yeah. And that is approved 3-0. All right, so next up, we have FY 2026 legacy link contract. You heard that earlier today. It actually began on July the 1st. Any other information needed? Motions?
Make a motion that we accept, or approve, sorry, approve the 2026 legacy link contract.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stowers, seconded by Commissioner Bruce. Discussion. Hearing none, please vote. Next up, we have the Georgia Department of Human Services, VERTA Incorporated, temporary contract. It's a three-month contract that actually runs out at the end of this month, but they just got. Any other information needed? Motions?
Make a motion to approve the Georgia Department of Human Services, VERTA Incorporated, temporary contract, July through September.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bruce, seconded by Commissioner Turkett. Discussion. Hearing none, please vote. And that's approved 3-0. Next up, we have FY 2027, Georgia Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration, Section 5311, application contract. You heard that earlier today. This has a deadline of September 30th. Is the reason that is being brought forward? Any other information needed? Motions?
Actually, I have a quick question. This is probably a stupid question that I should know the answer to, but the $274,475 that's our local share, is that already budgeted?
We budgeted, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Yes.
It's a yearly 50-50, so yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to accept or approve.
Approve.
Accept, approved, okay. Transportation Federal Transit Administration Section 5311 Application Contract in the total amount of $548,950 with a 50% match, our local shares, $274,475. I don't know what fund that would come from. General fund?
It'll come out of general fund.
General fund.
It'll be in their budget.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bruce, seconded by Commissioner Turkett. And that is approved 3-0. Next up, we have the ratification of the joint defense agreement that we authorized our attorney to sign. Any other information needed? Hearing none, please vote.
Do we have a motion on that, Chairman?
No.
No.
Do we need them?
Yeah, we have a motion to ratify it.
Make a motion that we ratify the joint defense agreement.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stowers, seconded by Commissioner Bruce. Discussion. Hearing none, please vote. That joint defense agreement is approved 3-0. We do have need to go back into executive session. This would be for personnel.
Just confirming, there's no public comment on the last portion, right? Did we address that?
There's no.
Nobody.
Okay. So just wanted to make sure. Yes, executive session again for purposes of personnel and litigation.
Okay.
Make a motion that we enter executive session to discuss personnel and potential litigation.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stowers, seconded by Commissioner Bruce. Discussion. And that is approved 3-0. Thank you for your attendance. There will not be a vote coming out of executive session. Thank you.
I think that's probably a good idea, but not blindside them, you know, tell them and.
Do we have that?
I think she should.